All right, I got six thirty to accommodate the order. We can start with the fund statements, please.
Um, one addition, uh, attorney RFP.
RFP, I want to have that, you know, A four.
What? Six A four.
Six A four. A four.
Yeah.
Six A four.
Good thing we didn't. I'll make that motion. I'll second it. Aye.
Aye.
I'll make that motion. I'll second. Aye.
Aye. Um, and also, um, Steve McDonald is here today, uh, to go over our something something audit. Uh, he's of Abdo, I suppose, or he's our auditing team, so. Uh, we do have the documents. I can get you a copy later, um, I know I sent it to you in the email. Uh, I did tell Steve that, um, to get it to you, um, you know, we, we have the digital copies and so, um, if you want a paper copy, we can get that to you.
Okay.
Do you want to go with that page two?
Yeah, yep.
As you go, which one are you going to talk first?
Sure, yeah, I'll go through the management letter first.
Okay.
Everybody's got colorful laptops.
Yeah, you can start, Steve, I'll get it going.
Okay, well, um, we have the report in draft right now because we're waiting on the, the attorney letter that we get for the audit.
Yeah, and they did, did that to me today, early this afternoon, did they get that too this afternoon?
Uh, I'm not sure, I didn't connect with Tommy, but-
Oh, okay.
It's not, it's not an issue that, uh, that it has come late, but, um, uh, the process is that when we send the draft of the report out, we send the attorney letter at the same time because they have to cross at the same, um, same date, so, uh, it's not unusual that we wouldn't get it back and we are, you know, a positive, we are turning the, our report around, um, within a week or two of, of issuing the draft. So, I think that that speaks well to, um, management's response and going through the draft of the report, so, all that's good. So, the, um, with the management letter, we have some required communications, uh, that we have to go through. One is that, um, our job in doing an audit is giving an opinion on the financial statements, and what that involves is tests of transactions and proving the balance, the balances, um, and the city's records, and we met that objective, so we gave an unqualified or a clean opinion on the financial statements. Now, um, part of the audit is considering the internal control of the city, so this involves, um, everything on how you secure transactions and process claims and payroll and, uh, bid or bonds and, um, all of the different transaction, transaction cycles that the city has. Now, um, I would say probably due to a lot of the transition that happened over the past year, uh, the number of findings that we're talking about is, is increased fairly significantly. Um, so through the audit process, we had some, um, uh, some reconciliations and some things that we had some difficulties working through, so, uh, but again, like I said, the response and kind of the proactive, what do things look like going forward, I, I thought, uh, the city had a good response that way. So first, um, on page three, uh, is the finding titled Preparation of Financial Statements. Now, the first two will be ones you've seen before. Basically, this is a segregation of duties comment. Um, with only really one person responsible for the financial statements, it doesn't adequately segregate, um, the, the duties. Um, you rely on us to prepare your financial statements, which isn't wrong, but we can't serve as a control or an internal control process. Okay, so the financial statements, uh, is the first one. The second one is limited segregation of duties. And so, we, we're specific here saying that it had to do with, basically, all your transaction cycles, cash dispersments, payroll, utility billing and receipting. Um, so, it, within each of these, again, I, I would say probably more due to the transition of positions, um, most of these duties were centered in one person, and I think that once we talked through it, uh, some of those duties got separated now here in the last month or two, so, I think that that's, again, a good response to the, to the situation. And, you know, the risk that can happen with these is kind of what happened, is that there, there were several coding errors and misclassifications and without that second set of eyes on it, there were a lot of errors that happened in the recording of the records. Um, third one relates to the, the mayor's, uh, check stamp. So this is one that we run into every once in a while, you know, there's a, a check signing stamp, and when one person who's also in charge of entering the transactions into that accounting system and reconciling the bank accounts, all those things, a check stamp is, is no control, um, unless it's in possession of somebody else. So, that's one, one point that we pointed out, and I, I forget what the resolution was, were we taking that stamp away or looking at the signers?
See, I haven't talked to you at all about it yet, anything we're like, take that stamp away and then how much we have to spend, and I know we do have to, uh, on our base account, like you said.
Yeah, it, there's just a lot of challenges with the stamp, you know, the, the physical control of it is important and having that separate from person to person. You know, it's one thing if, if you wanted to carry it around on your belt loop or something and show up at a council meeting and hit it, but, um, and then, let's see, I, I forget if we, yeah, at this, at this point too, this is another thing we talked about, um, with claim approval, um, the availability of the invoices, okay, so, part of that, that process, and I, I don't know if it got brought up, but one good practice that we see is that council's ultimately responsible for approving the checks, the claims, that when you're doing that, you want to make sure that you also have access to look at the support for those, if you have a question. Just approving a checklist just isn't, isn't really much of a control. Um, sometimes you should spot check invoices that catch your attention, that seem like an unusual amount or those kind of things. That's just a good monitoring process, um, compensating control is what we would call it, so, that's something that, um, that I would advise. Okay, on page five, um, material audit adjustments, uh, this ties to what I was mentioning before when I was talking about the segregation of duties. We had a number of transactions that were, uh, coded in the wrong spot, um, and really made the reliability of the internal records, um, in question. So, if you're reviewing a, a revenue and expenditure report in September, um, it would be almost a certainty that it would have been wrong in terms of the position of each fund. So, we had good discussion about what the correct coding is, the process to go through this. I, I feel like going forward that we have a, a much better process in place. Um, so, again, this is, this one, all of these are considered material weaknesses, so, the, there's something called a, a significant deficiency, which is a lower level, and then a material weakness basically means that you can't rely on the, the internal accounting records. So, material weakness, I don't want to understate it, it is a big deal and they need to be corrected. Um, developer escrow account, uh, balances, um, the, through the whole year from January until we were out doing the audit, uh, there are two developer accounts that weren't reconciled and the city was fronting costs for the developer, which is typical, this is a process that does happen, but the best practices would be that you'd be applying that against a deposit that the developer would put in place, and instead, the city was paying those bills in advance of getting money from the developer. Not wrong or illegal or anything like that, but from a cash flow management standpoint, you went twelve months without collecting that cash, and so, um, when we're out doing the audit, Maggie had reconciled those accounts and, uh, we were able to identify the amount that needed to be billed. Um, so, it was billed at, uh, at the time of the audit, but we went over twelve months without reconciling that account. Um, let's see, the, page six, the authorized signers, um, this one's a little ticky tack, but it does, is something that you have to think about when you have, uh, turnover, is that the old, uh, city administrator was left on the 4M account as a signer, so, that one isn't your operating checking account, so it's easy to overlook that, but just going through the checklist and making sure that, um, all of the accounts have the correct, uh, correct signers is very important. Okay, now, the next section has to do with, um, testing that we do related to legal compliance. Um, Minnesota statutes require that we test a number, a number of areas, um, how you spend money, deposit money, bid a project, bond a project, those types of things. And, uh, when we were doing the audit, we noted that, um, that the para that was withheld from employees wasn't remitted to para from October first until when we were out doing the audit. At that time, you'd transitioned to ADP, and that's not part of what they do. Uh, they don't do those, those para remittances. And so, what happened is those withholdings stayed at the city. Um, statutes require that you remit para within fourteen days of payroll, so, um, it, it, the, the, as far as any consequence or, or fine or that, of, like that, I don't, I'm not sure exactly what they do, but again, I, I believe it was taken care of, um, at that point and isn't, isn't an issue going forward, but that's just one of those things that has to be taken care of. Yep, um, I, I- Well, the para one, I, uh, is also an internal control finding.
Okay.
Yeah, so it, it covers both of them, it's both a- Yep, yep. Yep, and then the time, uh, period for payment of claims, now, we pulled one invoice that was paid outside of the thirty-five day period, you get it, you flag it on day one, thirty-five days later, you have to pay it or you need to pay interest. Um, it was one transaction, but again, based on the limited controls and things that, that were in place, um, we decided that that is a, that's something that needs to be reported as a, as an instance of noncompliance. My guess is that if we would have gone through more transactions, based on my judgment anyways, that there, that there weren't controls in place to make sure that that was taken care of. So, um, again, an easy one to correct, just to, to stamp the invoices as they come in and make sure they're paid within thirty-five days, so, I'm confident that the city's got the processes in place now. Okay, so, a lot, yeah, there's a lot of findings, um, again, the material weakness part is, is important, and I, I would say through all of those, I believe we had good conversation about how they happen, what needs to be done going forward, and that the processes in place will ensure that they won't happen again. Um, but again, it's like having some monitoring and making sure that, um, that we're doing things, like I think now the bank reconciliations are separate between Janelle and Maggie, um, that's an important part of, that, just that alone adds more control than what you currently have, so, that would be, that would deal with the internal control, the para's been cleaned up, um, so those things make a difference. Okay, um, let's see, uh, other areas that we'd need to report out, so, under that qualitative aspects of accounting practices, the, highlights areas where the city makes estimates, and it's just important to be aware that there are, are instances where we're making best guesses. Um, and it revolves around depreciation, which we're estimating how long something's going to be put in use. Uh, the pension liability is kind of a big estimate because, um, they're talking in, I saw the league update that they're trying to change the, the interest rate assumption from eight percent to seven and a half, and that will have a unbelievable difference for some cities, just that half a percent change, uh, and that totally is a guess, so that's guessing what the market's going to be. Uh, post-employment benefits, um, is also another area where, uh, we make assumptions. And then how, uh, wages are allocated, this is kind of the real one, where every year you need to look at, what's our allocation between water, sewer and general for some employees that work across departments? So, management makes best guess based on usually time studies or talking with the department head or those kind of things on, uh, does our allocation still make sense? Okay, um, let's see, as far as, anything else that we need to, to report out, we've covered, uh, a lot in, in those items, I think I'll jump to the numbers, um, on page nine, if we go there. So, uh, what we start here, on page nine, is a table that, uh, shows, uh, general fund balance relative to the following year's budget, so that relationship should indicate your working capital funding. Uh, we target thirty-five to fifty percent in general fund reserve in order to pay bills from January until May or June, and, um, maintaining that, that balance above fifty percent has been achieved for the last three years, we're at seventy-nine point seven percent. Um, your practice last year was that you transferred out excess fund balance to capital funds, which is a good practice. Um, it, it allows you to maintain working capital at, uh, at the recommended target, plus build reserves for future projects. So, again, you have that opportunity to, to do that this year. And then it's graphed out on page ten. Um, at the bottom of page ten, the results of budget, um, that were, the actual compared to budget is highlighted here, you can see you're positive on both revenue and expenditures. Uh, so, uh, building permit activity drove most of that revenue variance, um, and then, uh, on the expenditure side, um, almost all, uh, areas were under budget from a department perspective. So, cap, but capital outlay was the largest at a hundred and forty-three thousand, so that, um, that drove most of the change, uh, positive, uh, variance in revenue. So, at the end of the year, even with that excess transfer of the prior year, which was two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, we still increased general fund, uh, eighty-seven thousand. Okay? And so, if you look at that, um, if you were going to do the same process again this year, uh, that transfer would probably be about the same, two hundred and fifty to two hundred and seventy-five thousand, if you wanted to get the fund balance down to fifty percent. Yeah, fifty percent of a million sixty-nine is what, five hundred and thirty-five thousand? So, that would leave two hundred and twenty thousand, or, yeah, so that would, that would be your available transfer if you wanted to do that. Okay, let's see, um, page twelve, uh, the expenditures of the general fund, uh, the mix of where you spend the money is consistent with what we see with other, other cities. Um, we also include some per capita information here, where we're comparing year results compared to cities of similar size, and in almost all of those categories, you can see from a per capita basis your, uh, dollars spent per person are less than the, the peer group averages, uh, that are reported there on the top, uh, current expenditures. On page thirteen, the special revenue funds are highlighted, fifty-two thousand dollars in fund balance at the end of the year, not a lot of change year over year, um, all have adequate balances for their purposes. Our capital projects fund, um, we're seeing an increase in the cap, in that capital project equipment fund because of that transfer you made last year, so that's increased three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, you now have a pretty decent reserve there. Um, and then, all but the FEMA grant are pos, all the other balances are positive except for the FEMA grant, which has been negative for the last couple of years. At some point, um, if there isn't a grant outstanding yet to be collected, we should close that with, um, available resources from other funds, so, um, oh, and then Park too, highlighting that, three hundred and eleven thousand dollars, uh, pretty good balance there. Okay, debt service funds on page fifteen, you only have two bonds outstanding that are considered debt ser, or, general, uh, general debt. Um, we have fund bal, or bonds outstanding of a million nine ninety-five, and you can see for the next six years, um, we have payments highlighted below in that graph. Uh, at two thousand and twenty-three, we finished paying off that geo-improvement utility revenue bond, which, uh, significantly reduces the bond, uh, debt service. Okay, the enterprise funds, um, page sixteen, this includes the water, sewer and storm. Uh, the graph that we have, um, at the top highlights our receipt collections compared with the, the operating dispersments and our debt payments. Um, and what this is highlighting is that our receipts are sufficient to cover operating expenses, you can see that that blue line's significantly higher than the gray, uh, but it's not enough to cover uh, debt service, so, that's where you rely on connection fees or, yeah, access charges, connection fees to make up that difference. And you've been successful with that the last couple of years, you can see the cash balance that's highlighted in the other graph, uh, show an ending cash balance of just over a million dollars. Now, I think it's important to have a forward look in, uh, the water and sewer fund, uh, that building activity, uh, you want to see what, what that will look like over the next four or five years and the financial effect that that has in the water and sewer. Because you have a debt levy in the, um, in the sewer, I think your long-term goal would be to reduce that debt levy, or that, uh, tax levy as much as possible. So, if we look at, on pay, on the sewer, we can see that, um, the cash results at the end of the year, million six seventy-four is very good. Um, similar to the water fund, we're collecting enough receipts, that blue line to cover operating expenses, but not enough to cover the, um, debt service, uh, in the sewer, so we're reliant on that tax levy and, um, connection fees as well. So, we have bonds outstanding of about two point three million dollars at the end of the year. Stormwater, um, here we have, uh, similar, cash receipts are, are good compared to operating expenses, but you see the cash balance has gone down for each of the last three years, the difference is project costs. So, project costs aren't in the, in the dispersment number up there, they're in addition to that. And then on the last page, on page nineteen, we highlight, again, go back to some of the peer group information, uh, that we talked about before, and, um, over, we're trying to show trends over time, not to draw one specific conclusion out of any of the information, but it's really how, where have we been over the last five years, helps you plan going forward, and then it also gives you some reasonableness test, I guess, if you're looking at the peer group averages. So, on debt to assets, you can see that that's steadily decreased, uh, since two thousand and fourteen. Um, this is the long-term liabilities on your balance sheet relative to your assets, so, the less, the lower the percentage, the better. Um, debt service coverage just focuses on enterprise funds, so this is back to the point that I was making about operating receipts not covering your debt service. So, what this is saying is that, uh, the net cash that we've provided, so operating revenue minus operating expense is only fif, sixty-three percent of the bond debt service. Ideal would be one to one, a hundred percent, uh, but in growth cities, that's typically not the case. Uh, debt per capita, uh, is down to about thirty-four hundred dollars a person, I remember when this was nine or ten thousand dollars a person, um, five or six years prior to this. Uh, taxes per capita is down, uh, five dollars a person and is now under what the peer group averages are. Um, current expenditures have been, um, consistently increasing for the last, uh, three years, but still are significantly under the, uh, peer group averages. And then capital expenditures per capita bounces around a lot every year, this is really project driven, so, uh, there wouldn't be consistency, uh, expected in each of these numbers. And then capital assets left to depreciate are, so first, your government wa, or, um, yeah, governmental, that's your streets and, and roads and bridges and those kind of things, um, fifty-five percent of the asset value is left to depreciate, and then the business type includes the sewer pipe, water pipe, all those things, uh, that infrastructure, and that's, uh, fifty-nine percent left to depreciate. Okay? So, a lot of stuff, uh, thrown at you there, um, were there any questions that come to mind?
No.
All right.
I appreciate it, I know, but, I mean, we, we expected some of those.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of them, some of those, um, you think, you think, um, we're trying to fix.
Sure.
Obviously, some of them that are on there, two years here.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, ki, I think a year of continuity will make a big difference.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor and Council, um, this is, uh, I'd like to talk about, uh, harassment course for the lead Minnesota cities, um, this is something that the personnel committee is, you know, working on, um, giving information for what would be the most cost-effective approach. Um, there's a couple options that we were looking at, one was to the lead Minnesota cities, like an in-person, um, course, so we would have about twenty, twenty-five people, um, it, they only do twenty to twenty-five people per session, and we were kind of looking at how many sessions we would do. Um, they also offer an online course, which is fifteen dollars per person, um, so we, our attorney also offered them the in-person one, uh, course, um, depending on, is that their hourly rate, um, I'm not sure how many hours it would be, I would think one or two, and then, the safety coalition, um, they also offer one, I think it was a little more expensive than, um, than the lead. And so, upon discussion at the personnel level, we, it, maybe was recommending, um, going, having some in-person sessions with the lead, and, um, and then also asking other cities if they were interested. I did send out, like, a, um, a memo to other cities in Herbert County, and I did get three cities that were also interested, um, and so, if we could, you know, team up with them, we could maybe just cut our costs, if we do like a joint session with a, a city or two, um, so they just said, I would get back to them, I mean, have a more solid plan in place, but I think some recommendations to go to other cities. And there are four, um, for twenty, twenty-five people, I thought, it's four hundred.
And how long does that last?
I think it's about, um, I think about, I would say two hours.
We went back and forth in discussions with personnel, we were, uh, questions, uh, for, uh, the lead coming to do it versus, um, the lead representing us in a lot of these things, would be good to have, so, we, we thought having a lead would, would certainly, um, we'll, we'll try to get it down one hour, um, spending that for two hours, so we're hoping they can kind of condense it a little bit, um, you know, obviously getting the, the period of, uh, get in there, uh, what we've talked in person, who, if I heard of our staff, would be good for that, uh, folks to ride, I'll just give my heads up, but, um, just be in the shop. And I think we got thirty-four of our employees, so we would, uh, 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 three different, but I would say live it up three ways, I think, because we would need to be two ourselves, um, if we did, uh, um, so,
We're hoping, yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Is coastal, is coastal, is out, or?
No.
Like?
Yeah, we talked about, um, yeah, our, uh, BBA, I'm sure, decided that, um, we're, um, uh, first treatment a little bit, um, um, the population, um, you know, it's not necessarily, um, certain, great stuff.
It would be manageable for all cities.
For all cities, probably, um, yeah.
I think it's a great, I'm sure, I'm sure.
So, I'll look for, uh, um, I'll look for motion, um, for either, um, the lead Minnesota cities in person. So, I'll look for, I'll look for motion for either the League of Minnesota Cities in person, four hundred fifty dollars per session, or the city attorney to do it, I'll eliminate a hundred fifty dollars, I'll look for a motion for.
I'll make that motion to have the League of Minnesota Cities come and do an in-person harassment training, two to three sessions.
Any discussion? And then the dates will be determined, and then while we chat other cities, we can sure. Do what there is. Any other discussion? I'll appear to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Six eight three.
Um, council, in front of you is a document that was out the previous time meeting. Well, it's a court seat, or data, or data contributor describer. And then the court data, data contributor describer. And then the, I did, at the time, I had recommended, based on the city attorney not approving this document, we did approve the direct college agreement that kind of allowed our, we, in that agreement, we had highlighted that our, Herbert County is our police representative, and then, or they would, if they cannot, and then our county attorneys and anybody follows after them, that would need to represent this criminal, criminal prosecution. I, so that document was proposed to me to be approved, which we did approve, the direct college agreement that's renewed every five years. This document, I did bring back to the city attorney just to confirm and get a little more information as to why and why not we were, we would approve this or not. And then discussed with him, sort of their investigation that, and this is for other cities that they're working with too, that they are now saying, yes, while it's not a mandated document by any means, that they said it doesn't hurt to approve it either. I think what this document does, it just allows us to have access to the court data. So, if we do have prosecution that moves forward, we would then be able to have access to the data in the system. It's a pretty lengthy and document that goes into detail about it. So, I did have the attorney review it. He did recommend that we do approve it now, and I'm just bringing it back for a couple of seconds. As you said, it's not a mandated document, he said it could be some kind of a.
And what were those kinds of?
Um, like I said, I think what he, it was a pretty broad statement. I think it just allows, when we have any prosecution come to Herbert County Police, that they would have access to additional information at the court level. We access to criminal data and the other line, we have access to. And I, yeah, it's a, it was a pretty, um. Um, I don't know if it has, I know the last one that was, is every five years. I know that this is an amendment, so I think there's a document that's already in place, and they're just recommending an amendment to their current document. I believe that there's an agreement in place, and now they're asking all the cities for an amendment to that document. I don't know if we've approached it in the past, but I know, I think they're now reaching out to cities to, to approve it. Yeah. Right, and I, I mean, I think he, and I think that's why he made the suggestion, they were making suggestions to cities before, that it's not a mandatory document, we can opt out if we want to. I'm not really sure why the change, but he just said upon further review, they're not telling cities that they, there could be, except that to approve the document. And I can get, I mean, we can, I don't think it's something that needs to be done right away if we want, if we want the attorney to come in and explain this a little better. And, um.
I'm not comfortable approving this.
Okay, yeah, we can bring it back.
Uh-uh. I need more information.
Okay, so, um, we just kind of worked out, like we, or a couple worked out, we went through six, um, RFPs for city attorneys. We did, upon further investigation, we did, or the councils did determine that there were two that stuck out. Oh, and, and. And so, um, so did those two, we didn't feel that they were the most qualified, or the council just feels that they were the most qualified. We then, um, we took the four, um, final, I know, proposal to a meet and greet to please, and with the, with these two to kind of get a feel for, just a little, get a little more information from both attorneys and, um. Yeah, sure.
I'll make the motion to have Kennedy and Graven and Ratzick, Rozak, and Maloney, those two law firms, come in for a meet and greet. I second that.
And maybe just definitely a three best practice for this majority.
I don't think so, I think it's just, it's not a final decision yet, so it's just a meet and greet.
Again, I'm, I'm, probably, probably just like, only because of the military, sure, I do think they should be involved. I understand that they're not, and obviously before, you know, they're looking to, when they get here, they'll meet, agree, and work for it. Any further discussion? I'll appear to say aye.
Aye.
I'll listen, may, motion carries.
Mayor, Member, and Council, yeah, before you submit my annual report of operations maintenance for the Wade Water Treatment Facility for the year two thousand seventeen. Enclosed, you're going to find a particular maintenance and equipment at Wade Water Treatment Facility. Again, I just wanted to let you know, this is our beginning our twelve-year operations, second phase of operations, two thousand five. And since that time, we received sixteen awards from the MPCA for our operational, the operational plant is the big word. We're receiving a seventeenth, and that will be presented in March at the MPCA, annual banquet at the World of Death. So, we brought it up, it's a great accomplishment for the South. And within the report, I listed a number of license interests as compared to our status for the year end. Plant renewal rates, annual flows, mild solids removed, and the required maintenance as well as reports and sampling. Also, I liked some of the cost-saving ideas, and things that we've implemented over the past year. So, to begin with, Mayor, Wade Water Treatment Facility information, our two thousand seventeen budget, Wade Water Treatment, portion of sewer budget for two thousand seventeen is three hundred and thirty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight. Excuse me, Mayor, year-end actual amount came in at two thousand ten forty-three. So, we ran the budget on that alone. This is as I received numbers, I put this report together, so we'll numbers pitch you. Our whole Wade Water Treatment Facility, two thousand seventeen, fifty-four point six million gallons, compared to five point three in two thousand sixteen. Mild solids, the spores flow, gave out about two hundred and sixty-one thousand gallons, so that's a period this year, or two hundred and eleven thousand about sixteen.
Sure.
Number two, as far as, what's our max capacity?
Or max, yeah, what's the.
Where's the sitting at, at the fifty, fifty-five point three hundred and seventy million gallons?
Yeah, they have to use that all, because our, our, and our regular pool capacity is three hundred and thirty-five mill gallons. So, annually, I guess I have to use that, or annual flow could be under annual flow. There are a couple of different pools that you recognize, it's a standard type pool, it's a wet water pool. So, we'll, we're at a lot of capacity for our waste water. Our annual.
Free real plant?
Here.
It's going to increase, what would be considered with housing, we build, is that pretty simple?
So, let's compare to, you know, increase in building, also wet weather, who still has a mild system. Say that we had a wet year, you know, would identify, that's why it was supposed to change, or go up in one year and be down in the next, based on like, uh, so. Moving to number four on there, we have, as always since start, have just a nominal treatment plant, and we've ninety-nine percent removed on all the O E S, and it's solid, so that's great. We did adopt a twenty-year gap improvement plan back in two thousand fifteen, a lot of those improvements, we have been moving along with in our gap improvement schedule. We, for this year, all those improvements are about right in two thousand seven, but we were completed, with the exception of pulling the well. It's one of the wells that we didn't get to this year, and we dropped this model this year, and we dropped this model. So, the smallest venture, about three billion dollars, so we got right C I P. So, huge, I, we did have, one, we own C I P, didn't see it identified in our report later on. We did have our, we made a area unit for March first, that I brought to you in December, that failed, and we had to have that replaced. That has been installed in February, so part, part started in December, finished in February, but it's installed, so. Like I said, I identified some cost saving projects. January of two thousand seventeen, we did, we did, we remembered also, remember this, we did present a proposal from, uh, all our solar, to put solar panels out of the Wade Treatment Facility. We presented that, we had a large expenditure, we did not take any action on that. We did contact, and again, if the ERGS wanted to review it against the changes changed, I know we contacted Maggie. Maggie might, so we set out against the changes changed. Cost, or, or at least what they have to say. I filed with all the new thresholds, the administration building, the health, the loss, and then our outside lighting, it used to be replaced with energy efficient, and we beat it. Continuing on, we have made some air at Wade Water Treatment Facility. In this next part of the report, I just looked down daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, biannual, annually, things that we do each year. So, those are the standard things that usually develop change. The next part of the report is the actual implementation of capital improvement projects for just things that happen in Wade Water Treatment Facility, January through December, and we've taken care of. So, no real large items, we do, I do want to report, we just, we did get a, talks with, with, open, make, you know, different M P S, that we do in two thousand nineteen, twenty-five year program was coming up, so we did discuss, we did discussion to, to end the year, preparing that application for a new, a vibrant program. With that, we have the answer, any questions on the part of the report that you have?
Very thorough.
Thanks, always, thank you. Appreciate it a lot.
I just love how proud you are of it. I know, I think it's great. I love it. And it shows in your, your report and everything, so, thank you.
So, you guys should be proud of the plants you have, it's a good running plant. I guess, I guess, for help, Kyle and Brent are good help out there, really is, they make my job easy, so. Sorry to cry the other day, we were talking about things, so.
Congrats.
Mostly allowing me in the door.
Thanks, Brock.
Thanks, very much.
Mayor and Members, we also, that is the full in the purchase of the K S P, for our home, for standard station number one, all these whole systems, about sixty dollars for, and forty dollars. With station in El Nuevo, twenty-four hour pump, that home, all the city waste water, all forty-five miles, really, by three to two. Twenty seventeen, Council approved the purchase of a twenty-four hour pump, first place, home number two. However, during the yearly service check, the product home number one had worse significant issues then. The new pump, first place, home number two, is called, last year, early, so our pump was due, it's a clear care, it's called, pump range overall. The new G S P pump, the same name, Gamano, is the current G S P pump, so it's a little quicker. Pump number two has about twelve thousand hours of runtime, it's about fifty years old. All the city wastewater holes in the first station, there are two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, ninety. And it was, uh, it was, uh, was it for this year for the capital, all the first stations?
I do, um, your last paragraph there, it's support design overall, because it causes all, all of our H P one basket. So, if we're replacing number two with the exact same one.
It's not, it's not the pumps, the pumps are not, it's just our collection system as a whole, kind of a work. Because all of our waste water flows to one location, and then it pumps through, so, I mean, our sewers are really deep, and that, the station handles everything, so. Yep, yep, right down where your house is, so the backup, the light's out.
So, you're pushing that.
So, a lot of the, when you crack me from raw, even when it comes out of here in Crete.
Right.
Some thousand thirty pumps up there, and then pumps all the way back.
Correctly, yeah.
And that's why, that's why the design.
That's support design.
Yep, even the house, like I'm rocking it all in, right next to the waste water treatment facility, it's supposed to come all the way back, go through all right here, and handle that, that whole back, so. So, and we, in order, I looked into bringing the pumps, the bigger pumps, because our, the size of our horse mane, our horse mane is eight inches to the entrance of the water crossing. And then from there down, County Road three, until we put our time to trust, it's a, it's a field, it's a line, up to there, from field to field. So, we can't increase our pumping capacity.
And that's where we added the extra backup.
Right, that's why we put in the pumps.
Right.
For, uh, the search, ours, we're ready to push more through it, as much as we can.
And for these pumps, what is the average amount of runtime in?
Daily, or?
Well, you have that, pump number two has about twelve thousand hours of runtime, and is about seventeen years old. What's the average on one of these pumps?
They've increased, because we got more houses, and more, I, I, more super overall, so, right now, like daily, together, they pump about five hours. And during a wet weather event, it's like, we get about four, for a K F B twenty four pump, it's seventeen years.
Yeah, yeah. About average for that, that pump?
I mean, you think.
Or should we be saying twenty thousand?
No, no, it's, it's, we're going to do it long time, I mean, I have a lot of, you know, way harder, typically more aggressive, more solid, more harsh, on everything, depending on whether it's water, or something like that, so. All I'd say is, it's got to get done overall. After this purpose, this first station should be, it must be handled, it's not working so bad, we can play the bunch of guy rails, we have to, knock on wood. Should be ready to go for a little, like, if whatever.
And there's fifteen thousand dollar pumps in your budget?
I think the purchase of the K F B twenty four pump, uh, almost fifteen thousand four hundred and forty dollars.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Further discussion. Mayor, say hi.
Hi.
Hi. You want the old one? Alright, I'll up yours now.
Hi.
Motion carries.
We have a few more.
And just out of, share curiosity, is that something, that whole design, where it's pumps here and then back, or, is that fixable in the future?
For a price, yeah.
Well, yeah, everything's for a price.
For what I would, I'm talking to kind of, Mark, he was a little bit, just, in the space of development.
Just have them go straight there?
Having them, maybe put in their own, they station the water, we put it up there, and kind of, have their own, it's like a fire station.
Okay. If, and he was receptive to that, possibly?
Yeah, 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 it's.
Okay, good.
Eventually, work involves housing, can just, probably.
Maybe more.
Flip station.
Oh, great, you know, we feel some, I mean, you have the traffic plans, and it's like, you know, having water, it's warm and something, so.
I just don't want us.
That would have to be done.
I just don't want us to make the same mistake again, say, well, it's all coming here, so let's keep it coming here, so.
You would have been putting another station back today, adding another station, no water, didn't really ask, you know, they didn't want to, or eight, three.
Right.
Yeah, in addition, uh, got some pipes, or got some pipes, for the shower, we had another station, so, they didn't want, they studied it, they wanted to say.
Okay. Now that we said. Thank you.
Um, I, we had community us, and it was, um, my other, it was good, there, um, I told them that we put kids company summer program in the newsletter, because they hadn't had anybody sign up yet for having summer kids company. Last year, they had twenty people, twenty, twenty five kids, but not all full time, but there, they, she wants at least thirty kids, otherwise it's too boring. There's not enough kids to have enough activities to keep them busy all day long. So, um, dependent on how many kids sign up for the summer, whether it depend, dependent on if they actually have it here or not, or if they do, um, maybe from busing in between, where they go to Watertown, and then they come back here for pickup. So, there's some things that she's kind of playing through. Any kids that do sign up for mayor, um, and they, and they find that there's not enough kids to sign up, they will just get moved to Watertown. So, it's not that, the parents would not have a place for their child, it's just, my side might get up from the air for the summer, and if they don't get enough kids, then my kids will just run to the water. So, spread the word, talk to your neighbors. Yeah, maybe someone would like to say too. Yeah, so, I, um, she did get some more inquiries, I don't know, I don't know if that was because of the bill newsletter that went out, which is really nice, because everybody gets those. And I'm pretty sure most of them read it, because they're looking at their bill, and then see that there's no adjustment, so that's kind of nice. Um, and then if you don't know, um, the school district is moving grades around within the schools for next year. So, the primary school, which right now houses kindergarten and sixth company, preschool, is now going to be a community center. It's kind of their overall plan, kindergarten's moving to the elementary school.
And this is all up in Watertown?
In Watertown. Um, so, not that it necessarily affects mayor, but I think that the city mayor should know what's going on with the school district. Um, so, they're looking at doing things from birth to the elderly, um, there's, there's been lots of meetings, but nothing's been put in stone on what they're gonna do, um, but, there's lots of cool things that are happening. And then kindergarten, it would be kindergarten through fourth grade, and then fifth, you'll go to middle school, it'll be fifth through eighth grade at the middle school. They have more room at the middle school to add, so, um, fourth and fifth grade this year will move together to the middle school next year. Kind of exciting. And I think they're still trying to, um, put more things over here for community us. What? Fourth and fifth will move to the middle school. Well, current fourth grader, so fourth grade teachers will still stay, so fifth grade teachers, so, your mom will be still at the middle school. But, uh, they're, they're all sad, because there's, some of their friends are moving, but then the kindergarten teachers feel like they're on an island, and so they try to include them in all the stuff, but it's hard when they're at different schools, so. It'll be, it'll be exciting, there were studies done that kindergarteners do better with older children, that was one reason that the school district decided to move them over to the elementary.
Personnel committee, I didn't mean with, uh, with the fire chief, just to discuss, um, a command vehicle, this is something mayor should look into, getting or not, you know, a lot of communities, we currently have, where even the chief is at home, or lieutenant, or captain, and instead of reporting to the fire station, they go right to the call from, from wherever they are in that vehicle. Obviously, a lot of medical, and the medicine can be saved from heart patients, or strokes, and things like that, so, it's something that's, that's, maybe we'll talk to discuss that, personally, thinking could be one of our. One of our best, usually, equipment we could have, to get out, that, that seems quicker. So, I'm just kind of looking at that, to just research on, to, um, it would be interesting, when you can get a fairly cheap, um, use load, uh, some communities will keep you five years, but, you know, bigger cities will keep you five years, so. I'm just researching that, um, obviously, maybe, that's all I have, the reports, you know, there's no, uh, 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 something, uh, last week, we talked about, uh, what are you, uh, some words, change that over here after that.
So, um, I did speak with, uh, Ms. Anna, and, um, I think she agreed, that we could talk about doing like a joint, um, maybe also planning community meeting, or, um, that was what I brought up to him, because I.
For the, for the parking, the side parking.
And so, he decided at that time, that that might be a good time to talk about that as well. Um, he said, I mean, what he had suggested is, um, he felt that, uh, most community should have a number, he thought that if you become too subjective, if you say, well, uh, if you add, her to the, I know some people, you can't work for, do that though, but, if you say, well, the city council can approve an extra animal, um, he said that, he would prefer that the council can cover just up a number, instead of, or, having to go through that process each time, and then not having, he said, then, then you would kind of have to put, like, okay, what conditions would have to be met in order to, uh, approve another animal? He said, well, he felt that, it just makes sense, if the council is comfortable, that to keep it at that number, or pick it up one. But he said, you know, if you were going to have a joint council meeting, or a joint planning commission council meeting, that one meeting to discuss, um, that court amendment, I think it was the sexual, uh, that, the commercial industrial, that, that one provision that allows, um, sexual, uh, businesses, um, that we could just, not that that need to involve, um, but, yeah, that's kind of. Yeah, and I talked to the resident about that, um, about that it was, that, that's kind of what the planner had suggested, kind of like.
So, I understand most of the relationships, we don't want to raise it, let everyone get raised, but we're gonna try to do, work in some language for a hardship, or, like, if, if man remember password, and things like that, and then it would be a time, you know, you can go over, you know, for a six month period, assuming, you know, there are times for those sorts of things, and after six months, you have to come and reapply, you know, all sorts of things, so.
Yeah, and I think he had, he had considered that, and he, sort of, I mean, he's, that was his thought, I mean, he, but he thought, having, since we were already having that other joint community meeting, that we could discuss it for example, time, to, to feel, I, I don't think he's against it, I think he was just like, well, I've seen, you know, he, he hasn't seen that very often, but, um, just because he was nervous about, I think that was, if he, like, administrative wise, so he, um, was too subjective, or, I don't know, he, I think he thought it was clear, and to be, but, um, but he just said, you know, we can, we can talk about that after meeting, and get a little more information.
I won't be at that meeting. A joint, a joint, a joint.
Alright, anything else?
I'll make that motion.
Wait a second.
Second.
Mayor, say hi.
Hi.
Mayor, turn.
I have just a couple of paper copies coming in.
Well, we have problems with dogs in this community, three times, so, I would say, there should be no dog that's under twenty pounds. That is me.
Under or over?
Under.
Over.
Because there's a bell. She's right there.
Okay, so, I have Steve here, again, from Amsterdam, um, so, um, someone has wanted to have Steve talk to us about, and, and he kind of already reviewed it, kind of the health of our, and our high funds, or water and sewer storms. Um, I think what, you know, we had, you know, me and him, we had some discussions, kind of what they look like, I think one of my concerns was, you know, with our rates, the way that they are, I just didn't, I know we had discussed it at a previous meeting, like, is such a rate them or not, and I did talk with Steve about, could we wait a year, based on, um, I, I would, I kind of wanted to gather some more information. I think the current rate study that was done, um, didn't include, like, that falling off later on, and I just wanted to make sure that we are, like, that we're raising, raising our, um, the rate, like, you know, based on, based on that, and based on, um, I just, I just wanted, like, like, um, yeah, based on that, and just, kind of, a review of, okay, like, how, where are our rates now, where?
For our water?
For our water and sewer, and, kind of, what the future rates look like, and I just, and, so I did ask him, just kind of put together what it looked like, and if a rate study was something that we should consider.
So, um, the problem statement that we're running through most of them, I think it's similar here, is that, uh, I Yeah, so, um, the problem statement that we run into most times, I think it's similar here, is that, uh, I have been a rate study for a long time, and what are things like five years, or six years from now? And what, what opportunities do we have, what options do we have? Um, we've done tier four rate studies in the last six months, that have to do with restructuring, the water and sewer rates themselves. And that's what this proposal kind of plays, yeah, the sample that we have in there, is really just a one, one phase approach, but usually an idea I hope to look at. I think the key things are, you mentioned, we're going through the hot information, that the sewer fund has a debt obligation that's already supported. And you're, you have a little bit different issue out here, is that both water and sewer funds are really flush right now, yeah, um, rather than the operating expenses. Um, what is the effective growth, what is the opportunity to either buy down that debt, or to see that debt levy increase? It's all within the budget, every city I work with does not want to have a levy paid off by the sewer. Um, so, when could you possibly do that? And without doing, uh, a more rigorous, we should look at, um, we really don't have all the facts together, so, if you're gonna see this thing tonight, you have a, you know, a twenty year CIP plan in place, all those things, that are an important element in the arrangement. Um, so, in our approaches, we've done a lot of these with smaller cities, I think the key things are, we have, uh, really end up good working knowledge of your landowners, obviously, or your management secrets. Um, we take that up from your utility loan system, um, and use that basic calculation, which will, all the kind of CIP information. And then in the end, you kind of wrap around it with comparison, other cities, that's why just, extra comparisons about that, really doesn't need a great study at all, but, it just gives you a good idea how to look around at other cities, um, explanation, or, it's why I'm talking about, you know, why, why do we look at what everybody wants to have? I don't know the back to this situation, but I do know some of the neighboring cities, and they're covered all the way around, um, they vary quite effectively. You know, on the city of Harvard, they probably do a lot of, they make a broad range of rates, so, and that's, that's one of the other things to get out of, is that it's small. So, what we're trying to solve again, is the problem statement, what if they do apply that, is what's our option, is to buy down or reduce, uh, the lines on accident, so, I think those are, if you want to, I heard it's a lot of situation.
The goal is, we would not want to levy for the sewer, we'd want that to be self-restable water.
I think-
So, you're just paying for the uses, and you're not paying for your taxes and your uses?
Right now, I think we levy about three hundred for sewer, to cover sewer. So, in that levy that we've proved here, when, when we look at kind of the general government, and then the levy, um, for debt, we have three hundred thousand in there, to cover our sewer.
Yeah, that's a lot of- If they come up with three hundred thousand, from your current rate, then-
Why? What you're, what you're gonna find though, I think this begins, the opportunity that we're having to begin, is that you have pretty good balances in both water and sewer fund, and connection fees are then coming in, at a sufficient level the last couple of years, to have that cash balance? That what this will do is project out based on what you know, growth, or, can we stop that, but not do these rates, but remove it? But do we have enough cash right now, to, to eventually get on up, to get ahead of that, that bond issue? So, I, I think, like, it is a great opportunity, because every year, you're, I, I didn't, just a little bit over the past few years, but nobody could answer questions when you get rid of it. We have enough cash, we have connections, and everything, which I, I think that's a good, go directly to that, as far as this-
Well, I think, us, man, we needed the original rate study, when we did it in-house, um, love to review it every couple of years, because we put it on a five year plan, so we didn't wanna do all the increases in the first year, because we knew things were going to be changing. So, that's why we did that tier approach, but then we lost some of that history this last year. So, I'm completely for getting a new rate study, cause I think we're kind of lost-
My understanding is that last one was strictly rates, increasing the rates to get us there, and this is now factoring the other thing out, because of growth, factoring in growth, factoring our debt, factoring we have cash, should we pay off some debt with that cash, or use some of that cash, but factoring all those, we cannot increase, I think they cannot increase, so I think for that reason, yeah, kinda where you're at, this is, this is the way to go.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, cause that's, that's where I, the rate increase, done up for this year, the conversation evolved around the cash balance, just a strong, uh, why would we increase, probably five percent, or seven percent, or something like that? You have the more specific centers, what is being told?
So, what does that cash do, I mean, I guess I would come in the rate study to say, you're, you're just paying down your current debts?
Well, I think, I think here's the fact, is that, um, I, you know, I believe the connection fees have been ahead of expectation. So, connection fees are designed to pay, pay off.
Okay.
So, they come in faster, they're collecting more cash, which reduces how much you need to pay. So, last year, um-
Three years ago, we didn't have any, develop these additions-
Right, right.
You know, planned out.
Yeah, so, ten years ago, we were telling them seventy homes, we already had thirty homes, times forty-five hundred reach, and we needed that to be self law, so when we were getting that, we had to make it up somewhere.
And now, we're getting back to about seventy homes.
We're halfway up, we're over half now.
Yeah, you have two hundred thirteen thousand, which is a decent water, and six million sewer. So, I don't know how many houses that, that was, but that's adding to that cash balance, meaning we had a, a better schedule. So, you know, whatever, but an ideal situation, we can project it out based on reasonable assumptions, and we would show that we can stop that, but that would be the ideals, and I'm not saying that's, that's what will happen. But having the role of a lady that has a, we come up with options, that can show how, you know, I think we would, we cut that tax front and have, I guess, I mean, based on, I think, our structure.
Yeah, one way or another, you're gonna have exactly our taxes and our services, you know, with a side which-
And since you're familiar with our, our budget and our finances, is there any way to come down on that price a little bit?
It's all sort of independent, you know, we are taking the information from the financial statements, but the work is in taking the information to the bank, and integrating all the other CIPs, really kind of independent work. The CIP for water plant, is probably not, but I mean, you know, it's, I don't know.
I don't know, I mean, I think it's worth, to me, I think it's worth the investment, so, I mean, we have a group of cash, you know, like, I just feel like we're so lost with, with where we're at, on, you know, where our rates are, knowing that we had this problem three years ago, and we're halfway through this five year plan, and now we've just kind of put the brakes on it, cause we wanna reanalyze it, but we don't have that-
Yeah, and I think-
The back data.
The one goal I want, too, is, is, you know, I, like, I don't wanna keep increasing rates, and, and having people come to staff and say, hey, why, or, you know, they want an explanation, to kind of why, why things are, why we're increasing them. And I want to be able to have some good explanation as well, and, well, we did review this, we did, uh, I mean, if we don't have things to have, and, um, you know, we can figure it out a little bit, and, and make sure that, you know, if we keep them stable, then we can, I mean, even then, we can provide the residential, we did review this again, and we're, we're staying, I think, what our decision is, and, um, I think it's worth reviewing, but-
We went the cheap, not cheap, I want to say cheap, but we went the more cost effective way three years ago, by having our city administrator come in, rural water came in, gave some pointers, but it didn't take it, encompass the other factors of not getting rid of this levy, and other avenues that, at the time, rural water and the industry would not have been able to accomplish in that study. Right, but that was the first of us, at least, we hadn't raised rates in, I think, like, eight year, I mean, a ridiculous amount of time, that it was just something that we had to do, let's do it cost effectively. Now, it's like, okay, now we understand what it means, let's really invest that time, cause we invested money in your wastewater CIP two years ago, and it's been an invaluable tool for us, and worth the money, because now we can use that for this study, and then we did the same for the waste of water. So, I know that, I think it's expensive, but at the same time, sometimes it's worth.
Yeah, if we can save that money, too, like, we're gonna do the cost, you know, for our levy, if we're gonna do other things, I think it's, you know, like-
Yeah, I think that, again, it's like I'm selling it, so, it's, it's all, but, yeah, if you're able to use this to levy a two hundred dollar levy-
Right.
Like, because now you have good information, that we turn out, that's why I guess, like, it's, uh, that'll be, the rest of it, that'll be to our, our levies, will be, you know.
I think, you know, we, we've been working well together, and I think that, um, just, um, bringing that knowledge to me, and helping me understand it, and then helping you understand it, I think is a positive as well. Cause I know residents are always asking questions, so-
I think a lot of these things, big cities who have the proper staff, have people available, who are doing these things, we're in a situation where it seems like we're contracted on both, we, we don't have a lot of choice for our investments, for all our studies, for those part of the study, for this study, that's just where we're at. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's worth, worth to do it, like, effectively, I mean, I'd love to get to the goal, if we do a study that we're halfway there, and still a success, I think, I'm, I'm interested, yeah, which certainly will, if we do a decent, if we, if we have to sell, operate the other companies.
I'd like if we're talking about when people ask me, you know, we can't compare it to other cities, cause ours must have a difference in other cities, and our costs, to what it are different, you can't, they're not apples to apples. But a normal resident of the municipality, you know, are trying to tell them.
Yeah, I'd like to share some, as far as I can personally, any other comments, any other-
No, I think that, uh, of course, ask the Steve.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll let Meg know after the way it comes close, the next close meeting, um, and we'll let you know what, what comes in.
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Fair, real quick, and I, I don't know if I saw a typo, from, from, uh, management letter to the other one, one of us asked about number one through seven.
Yeah.
Three, and then, I think the other one, there was just one through six.
Okay, I got it, I said number four.
Can you check, check those?
Yeah, I, if, um, if you saw that, then one, I'm sure the next city has.
One, yeah, one of them said one through seven, one said one through six, so that, um-
Sure, exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah, we're material witnesses, you know, so, let's, let's check that, and, and I'll find one today, if you don't mind, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right, audio visual proposal.
So, I just have this, um, like, I know, uh, I just need some, some comments on our audio and visual, I think our audio is, I mean, our visual is okay, I think our audio, even myself, I've looked at the videos, you cannot hear anybody, it's pretty, it's pretty tough. So, I thought, you know, I, I reached out to other communities, I asked them who they thought would be a good, good person to work with, so I contacted Jeremy. They did provide an audio visual, um, con, or kind of a, they came out and assessed, and, and then I told them what I wanted, um, then it came back really high, and so I was like, okay, um, what would be the audio at this time? It still came in really high, um, and so, I put this in the packet for a discussion, but then I also reached out to Zach, sister, who does this kind of, you know, he does audio and visual kind of work. I think he helps with this current system, and he felt, after our discussion today, he felt that we could do it a lot cheaper. Cause I don't think we're looking for anything, like, too extravagant, I think we just, you know, I think we need something that just works, like, like, just, you know, just so that, for the public, that they can understand, but, and I think we can give it a lot less than nineteen thousand. I put it in there because I had wanted a kind of discussion, but I, you know, when I was thinking about it more, I was like, you know, there's somebody local, somebody local that does this, and I think he has, might be, like, for way cheaper than, than nineteen thousand. So, I kinda answered my, um, question, I think, I think we should maybe reassess, and I should have maybe just taken it off, but I think, um, just maybe asking him, or are you comfortable with me asking him to see what he thinks, or do you wanna go stick with, you know, somebody who-
Can we get a couple bids, including, including from him, because-
Yeah, I can see kind of like what his line items are, and then maybe reach out-
Yeah. How come? Good to have bid from him, it's mother people, cause I, I, I mean, yes, I, I know that the audio is really, really bad.
Yeah.
Visual's not that great.
Yeah.
So, I would like to see us include, if possible, include a new, you know, new camera.
Okay, yeah.
Or something, but, I mean, I understand why it was taken out of this one, because of the nineteen thousand, but, um-
Well, I think it was like thirty something for everything, and I think they, they just are, you know, they're a company that comes in, and they're like, yeah, this is gonna be great, let's do this, and this, and this. I think that's great, but I think, well, true, I don't think we need anything like-
Maybe talk to a couple other different people, just maybe like two or three.
I think we get tone it down, somewhat different.
Yeah, I, 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 I would like to talk to some others, I mean, these microphones are horrible, they don't work half the time, where I was, I forgot charging them, and you can't hear on the, on the tape, so-
The cameras blurry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm certainly looking, see what we can do for operating those.
Mm-hmm. And why didn't we go with them, there was a reason we didn't go with them.
I think it's very expensive to have them.
Is it a cable, like cable commission?
Yeah. I think it's very expensive to have them doing it.
So, like, something that may do our- Yeah, I've gone to these that are, you, you have a bunch.
But it's certainly something we can look into, yeah.
Yeah, I could do, do that, I just wanna do-
Water, water tell, has it shut up, you just go right to their website, click on it, it's not through YouTube, but I don't know what-
Live feed through the website?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Forget what it is, what it's called, but right now, there's other options.
There's techie people out there that can figure this out for us.
Yeah.
Probably, if you're ready to do Facebook Live, you'd be better.
Like, from your cell phone.
You know, also consider like the Geek Squad. Because, you know, they ta, they, they come out and set up your entire AV systems in the home, why shouldn't they do something?
Yeah, we want it compatible with what we have, you know, we need it to be compatible with our system, so, all that, so.
Well, yeah.
There's options out there, so.
Well, people, I'll, I'll put it, um, a future workshop, and have more information.
Yeah, I definitely think we should look into something.
I agree.
All right, anything else?
Um, I do have something. I'm just wondering if that should go off the record or not, so. Yeah, I think it should off the record.
All right, then we, uh, close for one session.